To adjourn back to an open meeting?
So move.
Support.
Call in favor.
Aye.
I know. Name of support is aye.
All right, um, next item on the menu, on the menu, uh, the agenda is two ninety-two point two four recognitions and presentations. Dr. Dignan?
Yeah, thank you, President Gray. I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to Ms. Curry, who's gonna give, uh, overview on S R three funding. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Curry.
Good evening. Just wanna take a few minutes to give you an overview of our S R three, um, plan and give you an overall update. So, as you know, the S R grants provided financial aid to elementary and secondary schools to counter the impact of COVID-19. They were distributed through three main channels, S R one, two, and three. Each S R distribution required funds to be used for specific allowable purposes focusing on preventing, preparing for, and addressing the challenges of COVID-19. S R three maintained the same allowable uses as S R one and two, but had additional restrictions which included allocating twenty percent of funds to addressing learning loss, consultation with stakeholders, maintenance of equity, a plan for use of funds, and in addition, all of our S R three funds must be spent by September thirtieth of this year. In the fall of two thousand twenty-one, our district conducted a survey among staff in the community to determine the most effective use of S R three funds. Identified as top priorities were initiatives addressing learning loss, supporting social emotional well-being, and investing in educational technology. Our plan is centered on these priorities by also including additional eligible expenses to comprehensively address the challenges posed by the pandemic. To continue smaller class sizes, our S R three funds cover salaries and benefits for K-five teaching staff alongside investments in band instruments, technology, and the STEM Center. Additionally, we allocate our resources for summer school, instructional programs, concentric services, field trips, college and career events, credit recovery program, and professional development for middle school teachers. Here is a list of the number of K-five teaching positions funded through S R three and the total amounts for each grade level. These are as of, at the end of March. So you can see there's twenty-seven kindergarten teachers, twenty-three fourth grade teachers, and so forth. So the COVID-19 spend dashboard tracks and displays spending related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and you can view S R one, two, or three on the spend dashboard. Anyone can access the dashboard, which provides transparency and accountability regarding the allocation and utilizations of funds. As you can see, our S R three allocation is thirty-one point zero seven million dollars. Additionally, the dashboard reflects a reimbursement of sixteen point seven six million dollars, which represents claims processed by Michigan Department of Education as of last Friday, April nineteenth. It is important to remember we must spend the funds before seeking reimbursement. The remaining fourteen point three million dollars is earmarked for S R three expenses that were outlined in this presentation. One example is the allocation of K-five teaching staff salaries and benefits, which will be expended and continue to be through September thirtieth. This is the detail page of the dashboard, which represents the amounts budgeted by function code category and the use of funds. The graph on the bottom left represents the total amount we budgeted by function code category. For example, salaries and benefits, twenty-three point one million dollars, or seventy-four percent. Purchased services, four point six three million dollars, which is roughly fourteen point nine one percent. Supplies and materials, two point four million, eight percent, and so on. The graphic to the right represents the total amount budgeted by grant use aligned with the allowable grant areas. In the graph, you'll also notice that the amount has been allocated to learning loss, which is about eight point five three million dollars. You can also, if you look to the left of there, you literally can choose Wayne Westland Schools when you log onto the website, drop down to S R one, two, or three, and it gives you that same information about the dashboard. That is a brief overview of our plan and open to questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Um, Ms. May said she has a question.
Sure.
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Curry, for this presentation. Just really quick, um, in regards to the staffing, um, or teacher salary breakdown, are these additional teachers, or is this the total, like, so there are twenty-seven, or twenty-seven additional kindergarten teachers?
Current kindergarten teachers. Yes.
To our staff?
Correct. So currently out of our kindergarten teachers, twenty, yes, so twenty-seven of our kindergarten teachers are all in our S R three budget.
Out of, do you know, like, is it?
I can get that for you.
Okay, so if it's like, I'm just gonna say, like, if it's four hundred teachers, twenty-seven of those salaries are coming out of?
So I believe it's every kindergarten teacher.
Every kindergarten.
Like within our elementaries.
Okay, and is that the same for all the grade levels?
I'd have to do a breakdown of each. I can tell you that we started with K-three first, right, when we looked at our staffing, and then we went from there. So we went with, we started with their kindergarten teachers, they went into the S R three budget first, because we really were honing in on K-three, early literacy. Um, and then we went for, like, okay, here's our total budget, what we can allocate, and we got those numbers there per grade level. I could literally, I have the exact number of teachers, I could get it to you and say, hey, we have twenty-eight kindergarten teachers and twenty-seven of them are. But those reclassification numbers are literally as of the end of March.
Okay, and so then, just so I'm clear, so as of September twenty twenty-four, twen, these twenty-seven positions would have to go back into the general fund if we kept the twenty-seven position.
Yes, so there's roughly, let's just say, a hundred, I'm gonna do approximate, a hundred and fifty positions there, right? So they will have to be reclassified to the general fund as of September thirtieth. So it's about nine, nineteen point two million dollars, I think, is what, that's roughly what it equates to, though, that staff. I'm only looking at Julie in case my numbers are a little off.
Right, no, and I just was trying to, I was like, wait, where are you looking at? I forgot Julie's name, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's like about nineteen point two million dollars within that K-five teaching staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a question.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
So do we know how many teaching positions was created up under the, and when I say created, how many was hired in under the S R forms? Not the ones that was already here under general fund, but how many was hired in?
I might not be understanding. So we truly took current kindergarten staff and just reallocate or reclassify their salaries from general fund to S R three?
So we didn't hire no new teachers up under the S R?
Not unless, say, if a kindergarten teacher left in the fall, right, and we wanted to keep those numbers low, and then there was a posting for a new kindergarten teacher?
So the funding that we will be losing for S R would be the same teachers that we already had up under the general fund?
Yes, so the list that I showed you today, they were all in the general fund, and then we just reclassified them to the S R three fund.
Oh, okay.
So same people that were funded out of general fund, just switched them and reclassified them to S R three.
So in September, they're gonna go back to the, right, okay.
And then we're gonna switch them back. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I do have, if you're interested too, or you might have even received, I think you received it earlier today too, the complete S R budget, if you wanna look at specifics as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? All right, thanks, Ms. Curry.
Thanks, Ms. Curry.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is three ninety-three point two four, citizens comment on agenda items. Like I said before, I'm gonna have everybody stay in your seat. Um, Ms. Heinz, can you pass me the?
Yes.
So I will call you based on your sheet you submitted. If it's not an agenda item, just let me know, and I'll move on to the next person. If you haven't turned in a sheet, fill one out while I'm calling people and, uh, get it up here as quick as you can then. Uh, the first name we had here was Dorothy Hagler. Non-agenda, okay. Nicole Falardoo. Non-agenda, okay. Okay. Kristen Van Dorn.
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda. And Eric Henze.
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda, okay. All right. So seeing as we had no agenda item comments, uh, we'll move to the next item, which is two ninety-four point two four, which is the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move approval.
Do we have second?
Second.
All right, do you have any questions about the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Heinz, can you take the vote?
Ms. Abney Mitchell? Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item is two ninety-five point two four, which is the Board of Education Committee report. Uh, we have one committee report at this time, which is the Finance Committee report. Ms. May?
Thank you. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees Wayne Westland Community Schools was held on Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, beginning at four thirty P M via the, via Zoom platform. Mrs. Abney Mitchell and Ms. May were present. Mrs. Samara informed the committee about a proposal to purchase annual spring building technology using Title I, S R, and sixty-one A C T E grant funds. She also shared that RISA has updated their terms of service for the I T consortium agreement and increased their fee schedule. This agreement provides the district's smart business software and student information system. Mr. Kendrick discussed the purchase of new buses through the bond and shared plans to auction off ten buses using C I S auctions to make room for the new buses. Mr. Montane presented bid pack number ten and bid pack fourteen. Mrs. Campbell shared the investment report, the check register, and a spreadsheet with all district subscriptions, renewals, and costs. Dr. Dignan provided closing comments. Mrs. Abney Mitchell and Ms. May also shared closing comments. The meeting adjourned at five fourteen P M. The next meeting will take place on Thursday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, five P M at the administration office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Next item is two ninety-six point two four, review and approval of business service and finance. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. The first item that I have for the board's consideration is the item that was tabled from the March, uh, March Board meeting, and that is the general fund mid-year budget amendment. And I, um, I wasn't gonna go through the presentation again, but I did wanna answer one question that had come up earlier regarding the, um, in the expenditure section of the recommendation, the question was asked why support services were so much higher in cost than instructional services? But as we just saw in Ms. Curry's presentation, um, a good portion of the salaries and benefits from instructional staffing has been reclassed to S R, and it's not in this general fund budget at current.
Do I have a, uh, motion to approve business service and finance item one as presented?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I will support.
Okay. Dr. Weaver, support. Do we have any questions?
One.
Mr. Neal?
We waited for the purposes of having people provide input. Did the board receive any input from anyone?
I did not. Did anybody else directly receive input? We did receive some input from members of the community during the meeting, but I did not receive any after that date, no.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I have a comment, but I was eating. Again, this is my sister. So my comment is that we see the budget amendment, but it's hard to, um, approve it without any supporting documents. So when I say supporting documents, I mean, the bank statement that says the same thing, anything that says the same thing as the writing is, if you say this is the mid-year budget.
So the bank statement or cash that the district, cash position of the district has no bearing on the budget. Those are two unrelated things. The budget is a conceptual, um, projection, and so the only documentation that is there, you received under separate cover, I believe, today, and that's the line item budget in the general fund, and then the, um, the key that talks about what each of these categories in the expenditure means.
I'm sorry, Ms. Julie, I'm looking at the, um, in my notes, I'm looking up under the check registry. I'm so sorry about that. I know it's a difference. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that's gonna start Ms. Ms. Heinz's committee.
Right, okay. No, I have no questions. I'm sorry, I was mixed up.
Ms. May?
So, um, I shared some questions that I had, and so, Dr. Dignan, I understand that we just kinda had a breakdown in communication. You did share some information with me. Um, however, I received the email as I was driving, so I have not had an opportunity to look at any of the information that I requested. But just so, for transparency, some of the questions that I had was around, um, what was classified under support services? A breakdown of what that really was, when you talk about instructional staff support versus pupil support, what are the, the difference between those two things? Also, um, what's general administration versus school administration? And I'd also ask for the, um, cost of those things in terms of whatever is identified as general administration. If it's five things, what are the costs of those five things? If it's ten things under school administration, then what are the costs of those ten things? And I believe you tried to share that with me this afternoon. Like I said, I was driving, it came through on my phone. So I still don't have the answers that I was looking for, to be able to, um, just intelligently vote for them. If you can, that would be awesome.
Okay, so your first question, pupil support versus instructional support staff, and those are identified by the little, uh, one-one X, you know, those numbers off to the left-hand side. Those numbers are assigned by the state of Michigan, and we have to adhere to those and the definitions that they set forth. So the pupil support services are activities that are designed to assess and improve the well-being of pupils and to supplement the teaching process. This includes attendance, staff, guidance, health, psychological, speech, audiology, social work, visual aid, teacher consultant, and other pupil services. So it encompasses quite a bit that is not teacher to student in the classroom. Then instructional staff support services, the state defines as activities associated with assisting instructional staff with the content and process of providing learning experiences for pupils. This can include improvement of instruction, educational media, instructional-related technology, supervision and direction of instructional staff, academic assessment, student assessment, and other instructional staff services. And then a second document that was provided in your email this morning actually is the budget worksheet that I developed that has every one of those function codes and every single line item within with description, original budget, um, revised budget, and last year's spend. Then I just take the original budget and last year's spend, and I look back a couple years, and I look at what we're doing this year and try to make an educated guess as to where we're gonna land at the end of the year. That's all that really exists as far as documentation. So some of it is in your email, some of it's in my head and in conversation. The second question that you asked, um, general administration versus school administration. General administration is activities concerned with establishing policy, operating schools and districts, providing essential facilities and services for staff and pupils. It includes community relations, board of education, executive administration, grant writing, and procurement. As opposed to school administration, the, those are activities concerned with the overall administrative responsibility for an individual school. So that would include any salaries, benefits, and activity in the office of the principal and his office staff, and might also include any other school administration, um, like dean of students, things like that.
Okay.
And again, those are all further in-depth in the, the lengthy spreadsheet that, that I sent you, and you'll be able to look up those function codes and see every single line item that we have in our budget under that.
Thank you, Julie. I, um, I do appreciate the definition. I think for, um, our community is helpful, not only with the definitions, but knowing exactly what we have selected out of those definitions, right? So like you mentioned counselors and, um, OT and all those different pieces. So then, like, what exactly are we paying for? You know what I mean? What do we have in those pieces? So that, that was more of what I was looking for, but I do appreciate, and I appreciate the documents that I've received this afternoon.
Yeah, and the, the actual dollar figures are in the other, the sixty-some page, that's what.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Do we have any other questions? All right, seeing none, um, Ms. Heinz, can you take the vote?
Ms. Ms. May?
No.
Okay, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Uh, Mr. President Gray?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Motion carries. Four seven.
All right, the next item on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Campbell, we're still with you.
Uh, okay, so the next item that I have for the board's consideration is, um, the renewal of the operating millage, actually one year early, which we're entitled to do, and I'll explain why that is necessary right now, or a good idea right now. Since Proposal A of nineteen ninety-four changed the way public schools in Michigan are funded, by law, school districts may levy up to eighteen mills of property tax on commercial and rental properties with voter approval. Occasionally, those mills are fractionally reduced by something called a headly rollback. This is beyond a district's control and occurs when property values in the region increase faster than the rate of inflation. Currently, because of headly rollbacks, Wayne Westland School District is only able to levy seventeen point four seven nine eight of their eighteen mills. Additionally, when the Inkster School District was dissolved, the school was in debt, and the taxes levied in that district have been going to paying off that school debt. The debt was recently paid in full, and now the districts that serve that community can legally ask voters to approve the eighteen mills levy and receive those dollars to aid in the cost of educating the children who reside in this area and attend the existing schools. All levies must be voter approved. If Wayne Westland Community School District were to submit a replacement operating millage proposal at the August sixth, two thousand twenty-four election, the district could both levy their rightful eighteen mills in the former Inkster district and capture the full eighteen mills in the remaining municipalities served by the district. If approved by the voters in August, the district could levy as soon as December, two thousand twenty-four, and capture a small portion of the current year's remaining revenue, expected to be valued at approximately a half million dollars in all. The resolution in your board packet for the replacement operating millage proposal asks for an approval of up to twenty-one mills. The reason for this is that although by law we may only levy eighteen mills per year, the extra three mills will give the district a cushion to use if or when future headly rollbacks occur, allowing us to continue to levy the full eighteen mills. I recommend that the Board of Education approves the resolution certifying replacement of the operating millage proposal.
All right, do I have a, uh, motion to approve, uh, operating mill, millage replacement proposal?
Can we ask a question or just?
So move.
After.
Okay.
Do we have support?
Question.
I'll support.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just had a couple of questions, a couple of questions. Okay, so, um, a little concerned about the twenty mills over the eighteen mills, so you know?
Point of order, did we have support?
Yes, we have the support.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so question. Thank you so much, man. Um, so a couple of questions with the, uh, twenty mill, 'cause, um, so I know parts of Inkster, because, you know, they got their debt resolved, but a lot of times the income is very low, like, the average, like, income's like thirty-four thousand, you know, with the U.S. Census, and, you know, eh, it's gonna be hard to get it passed. And then a lot of times, too, with the primaries, a lot of people don't go out to vote. You know, you wanna maximize, you know, the voting to make, make sure that we win this, this bond here. So, like, the strategy, like, would you guys have, like, a strategy behind it? 'Cause that's what I'm concerned about, 'cause I, I'm the, like, the election chair for Weston, so I'm always in the elections, so I see the ebbs and flows. The last two elections, like, nobody even came out to vote. So for this to pass and be successful, like, if it doesn't pass in August, will we put this back again on the ballot for November?
We would go out again because we have by law to go out when our current millage expires, which is gonna be next year. We're, we're proposing a renewal this year to try to capture dollars that we're missing out on. So yes, we would go out again, but to answer your question about, um...
The twenty to the eighteen, yeah, so I'm just concerned about that amount.
Okay, so we can only levy up to eighteen mills. But when these headly, and this proposal lasts for, like, twenty years, would, would allow us to levy for twenty years. The, the extra three mills actually doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't, it just sits there until we have another headly rollback that kicks us back another half mill or something like that. Then we can take one of those, half of tho, those three mills that are in our cushion and add it to our levy so that we can still levy eighteen. If we ever get to a point where beyond the vote or the pass of this millage, we have headly rollbacks that exceed three mills, then we would have to start levying less. But as long as we have that three-mill cushion for the next twenty years, we can still levy the eighteen mills when headly rollbacks occur. The, the other question you had is, um, regards to voter turnout and things like that. This is a non-operating, or a non-homestead millage, and so homeowners do not pay for this tax. It's just on commercial properties and rental income properties. And so the best way we can, um, get voters to turn out is education in the community.
And one more question. So would this be like the, 'cause I know Wayne Weston's comprised of, like, Wayne, Weston, Inkster, I said different, you know, like, not necessarily, but six communities. So would this affect the Inkster residents because of the, or would this be the whole Wayne Westland?
It's not going to impact Inkster residents at all, 'cause they're currently levied eighteen mills that's been going to the state to pay back the school's debt. So passing this wouldn't change anything as far as what they're paying in taxes. It would just redirect that tax revenue to us where it belongs, basically, now that the debt's paid off.
And then with the marketing, 'cause I know it's real tricky, why you can't use, like, school district funds, and it has to, like, education, you can't be like, so yes, you know, so, 'cause I helped Weston with their bond that they passed. So would you guys do more of an educational type?
It's, it's educational. We can, we can encourage people to vote. We can't tell them how to vote.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And so will we have to raise funds, because I know the budget's a little tight for that particular campaign? Like, how would that work? Would we get money from Wayne RISA or?
This is different than a bond campaign in that, um, with a bond campaign, you're really trying to market what you wanna do with that money, because that is gonna impact voters. This, this will have no impact financially on homeowners.
'Cause people just see it as, like, you know, they're not, you know, they'd be like, oh, this, they wanna tax more money. Now they're not gonna think of it as commercial, you know what I'm saying? So we have to really push it as, you know, renters and commercial, 'cause a lot of people gonna think of this as extra tax bill. And you know how social media, people always put stuff out there early, like, you know, oh, they wanna raise tax Wayne Weston, you know? So we just gotta be real careful how we market to make sure people know exactly what it is, 'cause I'm, I already see it on social media, oh, they want more money from us, and so we, 'cause I really want this to pass, 'cause we'll be losing, like, five hundred thousand if we don't get it. So it's so important that we really push it to our neighbors and community to make sure this goes through. I'm super.
Absolutely, and, you know, we've, we're ready to market as soon as the board would consider approving it.
Thank you so much for answering every question.
Any other questions?
I got a question. So do we know how many Inkster students that we, that go to the Wayne Westland District?
I don't know that, but I'm sure someone in our district has that data.
Because my concern is that, you know, Inkster does not have any schools, and we are so happy that our debt was finally paid, because we had senior citizens paying that debt. People on fixed income, so we was just so happy, but the section of Inkster that I live on, I pay my school taxes to Wayne Westland anyway, so I wasn't part of the debt. But my concern is, because we are broke up into four school districts plus school of choice, you know? Outside of the, all the other struggles that Inkster's going through and everything, and now that y'all coming back, when our commercial businesses have a chance to finally breathe, because they not paying that debt right now, now y'all coming back to get the money. I know the children has to have, we have to have the money to educate the children. I know that for a fact. But because I'm an Inkster resident, it's just so many people jumping up and down that they not paying that debt right now. So, and it's all about the, like, Ms. Heinz said, marketing, that you're gonna have to, you know, market, work with the mayor, make sure that those renters, their homes are registered as a renter, and just make sure that you... and just make sure that you, you know, you, it's gonna have to be sold. And I will be more than happy to help you guys with that and everything, but... It's just, it's just touchy, it's just touchy, but our kids need to be educated, and our kids go somewhere every day. So, you know, anything that I can do, please let me know.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz, if you can take the vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, my next item for the board's consideration is a recommendation to sell obsolete school buses. Wayne Westland Community Schools purchased nine buses as part of the current voter-approved bond. As a result, we've been able to decommission ten of our oldest buses that are no longer roadworthy. The district would like to sell these decommissioned buses through CIS auctions, which we've used before, and a list of this year, of these buses' year of manufacture, VIN number, and bus number is included in your board packet, as well as the letter of request from Deandrea, the supervisor of garage operations. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the sale of these buses through CIS auctions as requested. The auction will take place as soon as possible after board approval, and the proceeds, the total of which will be reported back to the Board of Education following the sale, will be returned to the general fund. And then I've stated the board policy under which that would serve.
Do I have a motion and support?
Support?
I mean, a motion.
A motion, yes, I like a motion.
Do we have support?
I support.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I just have one quick question. Do we have a timeline on this at all?
Well, we weren't able to start anything until the board...
Right, but I mean, like, after the board, if the board votes for this.
Immediately, like, tomorrow, they could start working with the CIS auctions, if the board approves it tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
My next item for the board's consideration is in regards to the bond, and it is recommendation to approve bid packs ten and fourteen. The district, in partnership with McCarthy and Smith, held a public bid opening for furniture in relation to the bond renovations at Adams, Stottlemyre, Graham, Taft, and Wildwood Schools. The lowest and best-cost proposals for furniture packages at all schools were submitted by Interior Environments in the following amounts: Fifty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents for Stottlemyre Early Childhood Center; Two hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-six cents for Graft, for Graham, Taft, and Wildwood Elementary Schools; and eighty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents for Adams Middle School. The total bond budget allotted for these furniture packages was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and this recommendation comes in under budget at three hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. I recommend that the board approves the proposals from Interior Environments for these furniture packages.
Move approved.
Support.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I have a question, so, where's the old furniture?
Where is the old furniture? They, well, currently, that's in the buildings. They're purchasing it to go into the buildings.
The buildings is running out, right?
With, with the old furniture.
With the old furniture?
It was in the bond.
This was bond voter-approved.
Oh, this is...
By, by the community in the bond.
Like, specifically, this furniture package was voter-approved.
Okay. Okay, all right.
But what probably, I mean, to speak to maybe part of your question, what probably would happen to the furniture is, it could be auctioned off.
Yeah, we need to auction, auction.
You can, with some of that, some of it, if you've seen some of those buildings and some of the stuff.
In condition.
It's, yeah, it's rough condition, that's why it was in the bond to be purchased. I'm not saying all of it, but, yeah, and then some of it can be repurposed throughout the district. And other buildings, we've taken some of the furniture from other buildings.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, you're not done with me yet?
Nope.
The next item I have for the board's consideration is a recommendation to purchase district technology. Our executive director of technology, Ms. Jacinda Sumara, has completed her building technology needs assessment and compiled a proposal that outlines some of the devices and equipment that are needed for each of our school buildings. Her request consists of Chromebooks, carts, cases, and chargers, as well as headphones, headphone adapters, headsets, iPads, iPad chargers, and smartboards. In your board packet is a detailed report outlining each building's individual requests. The items in this request were all part of a spot connect bid that RMC Safe publishes each year after they pre-bid items based on volume buying throughout the county, which ensures best pricing. The entire purchase would cost five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, and the funding will be split as follows. Title grant funds would pay five hundred fourteen thousand, seventy-six dollars. S R three pre-allocated funds would cover twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. And C T E sixty-one A categorical funds, which is part of the general fund, although it's restricted and can only be used for state-approved purchases, such as this for C T E, would cover the remaining nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. I recommend that the Board of Education approves the purchase of district technology in the amount of five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars from the three funding sources stated above.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Heinz, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Dr. Weaver. Do we have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, and then my last item of the night is in regards to the Wayne RISA Services Consortium Pricing Agreement, which is getting ready to expire. RISA provides several essential services to Wayne County School Districts at consortium pricing, which is far better than individual districts would be able to attain. Two such services that Wayne Westland Community Schools relies heavily upon to conduct operations are MyStar, which is our student information system, and Smart, which is our financial system used across all buildings and departments in the district. These current service agreements expire with the end of the current fiscal year and need to be renewed. Wayne RISA's fee structure is developed on a proration for each district based upon the student enrollment numbers and includes a two percent increase per year, which is actually on the low side of recent annual service fee increases. Although pricing, although the pricing estimate provided by RISA covers the next five years, the proposal being brought forth by Ms. Jacinda Sumara is to lock in this pricing for just the next two years, fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six, with a potential three-year extension that would be decided upon annually. Wayne RISA would invoice Wayne Westland Community Schools on a quarterly basis for the services in this agreement based on the following price structure they've provided. And then you can see the price structure in your board packet. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of middle and high school, oh, sorry. I didn't update that line. Approve the, recommend, I recommend that the Board of Education approves the renewal of Wayne RISA Services Consortium Pricing Agreement as of July first, twenty twenty-four, for the fiscal year twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-six.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right, do you have any questions about this? Any comments? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, thank you, Ms. Campbell.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is two ninety-seven point two four, which is a view and approval of Board of Education. Ms. May is gonna talk a little bit about this as the Chair of the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, and it's a recommendation to contract with M A S B to facilitate the evaluation.
So, briefly, just speaking about it, given the difficult circumstances that the district is in, and understanding that we're going to have to make some difficult, or we're gonna have to have some difficult conversations as we go through the evaluation process, I believe that it would be better done by someone from the outside who knows the tool and the process to facilitate the discussions that we need to have. M A S B will do that for us on the fee of eight hundred and fifty dollars for the final evaluation, and so I wanted to bring that to the board for discussion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have support? All right, do you have any questions, comments?
I guess specifically, what will M A S B be providing us? That doesn't seem to be a whole lot of money. And exactly, what is their plan?
So, their plan is to facilitate the evaluation process. So, when we sit down with the evaluation tool, they will be the ones to facilitate that discussion. So, as we go through each point, and we have the conversation, and we do the rating, that would all be facilitated by M A S B.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Heinz?
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, and next item is two ninety-eight point two four, which is Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. I'll go through them in the same order that I did before. First, we're gonna start with Dorothy Hagler. And if you did still wanna make a comment, you can still go grab a sheet and bring it up to us while we're speaking.
My name is Dorothy Hagler. I'm a Wayne Westland Community School District alumni parent, Westland resident, and guest teacher. Our schools are here for students. Each student has unique needs to thrive. I am concerned with what I have heard recently regarding special education classrooms and services. I want you to know that the school district must have variable options for students and student support services, and in addition to the special education, the college readiness and that whole gamut, too. I realize the multitude of concerns within the district that fall within the school board's purview. However, it is my conviction your first focus should be on students and the staffing to retain quality personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Hagler. We have... All right, next we have Nicole Falardo.
It's Flarado.
Flarado? That's, that actually sounds more right.
Hello, I'm Nicole Falardo, and I'm a math teacher at John Glenn. I'm concerned about the plan to consolidate several AP classes to either one building or the other, and I know it's an attempt to save money, but I feel like it sort of comes at the expense of the students and might end up being detrimental to the district in the long run. First, student-wise, busing them to the other high school will take time, and it's either gonna take away from one of their classes, which obviously will affect their education, or it'll take away from their lunchtime, which sort of affects their social and mental well-being, especially since a lot of them are seniors, it's their last year together. Obviously, busing will cost money, I don't know how that compares to what they would save. The other thing is, we wanna give the students everything they need to succeed, no matter what path they take, and I feel like for the students' plan to go to college, it's important to have the rigorous AP classes. They need them to help them, whether it's the English classes, helping them learn to write really well, or, in my case, since I'm a math teacher, I'm worried about the Calc classes. I know if you are majoring in engineering or some of the sciences or the maths, Calc one is something you have to take, and it's usually considered a weed-out class. What they cover in the first semester of Calc in college is what we in general cover all year in our AP Calc class, so obviously, it goes much faster. Obviously, they do really well in the AP class, they can even test out of that, but even if they don't, having a basis to start from will help them when they go on to college and help them succeed there, as opposed to crashing and burning their first semester. So, I just, I really like them to have the option to go to Calc. The issue with it only being at one school or the other, or with any of the other AP classes, is sometimes the kids are scared of hard classes, and they need encouragement to get there. And if they have to bus to the other high school, sometimes that's like, well, I don't wanna do that, so I'm not gonna take it. And obviously, we wanna encourage them to do well, to do hard classes and all of that. We wanna give them everything they can to succeed, as opposed to throwing hurdles in their way. Other thing, we wanna encourage the harder classes for these students. And one thing is, well, and again, it's harder to recruit the students if they know they have to bus elsewhere. Sorry. I definitely skipped something, okay. Oh, other thing, district-wise, when people are looking at coming to our district or not, we want them to see a place where they can excel in everything. Our VOTEC Center is amazing. It gives lots of people that option if that's the route they're planning on going. But we also wanna make sure the kids who want to become engineers and everything else have that option. We want them to see that our high schools have the AP classes they can go to. We wanna get those kids to come to our districts, and if they see they're not there, they might choose to go elsewhere, so that's why I felt, okay.
Thank you. Do we have Kristen Van Dorn? Did I get that one right?
Yep. Hi, I'm Kristen Van Dorn, I'm the POH high teacher over at Graham Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of some of the elementary teachers. Sorry, this was an email, this was texted to me, so sorry. All right. I am speaking on behalf of elementary teachers. Many of us feel that little attention and emphasis is placed on what is happening at the elementary level. We receive lots of emails, toting, and the accomplishments of secondary students, programs, and staff. We are told about all the special programs and activities that exist at the secondary level and from the College and Career Readiness Department. Very little of that directly impacts our elementary students. We hear that many accelerated and advanced classes are being cut at the elementary and secondary level. This is concerning because it no longer gives our advanced learners opportunities to grow and be challenged. It seems as though we, as a district, are more focused on the lower students and on sports. We're losing families to other districts because of this. Free sports for elementary students is not enough to keep families here. We need support and enrichment for academics and the fine arts, too. If resources are not given to the elementary schools to teach all the fundamental and behavioral skills, then students will not be prepared to meet the challenges in middle school and high school. One example of the lack of disconnect and support in the elementary is when it comes to field trips. It has become so challenging to schedule a field trip that many teachers just don't wanna bother anymore. Trips have to be scheduled months in advance, so all the paperwork, which is very time-consuming, sometimes two planned periods are needed just to fill out one thing, is completed and all the people that have to sign off on it at the same time to do so. It's a very slow process. Money has to be collected far ahead of time, so check requests can be made. Families have difficulty meeting these financial deadlines, especially with transportation being so expensive now. Students are going to miss out on experiences if teachers no longer want to jump through all the hoops to plan a field trip. When trips are planned at the district level and dictated to the classroom teachers, many of the logistics are not considered because classroom teachers are not consulted, like the need for adaptive transportation for special-needs students. In closing, elementary teachers would like to feel that this district values their work and their students. Attention to and collaboration with elementary staff would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then we have Eric Henze.
I'm going to read a letter on behalf of my colleague Sarah Parminter Boyce. Dear School Board Members, I am an English teacher and department chair at John Glenn. With 25 years of service in Wayne Westland, I am extremely concerned about an ill-conceived plan that will decimate our Advanced Placement Program and other electives in the 2024-25 school year. Rather than run smaller sections in both high schools of AP classes and special electives such as choir, one section will run in one high school and students from the other school will be bused for that one class. The detailed logistics for this plan have not been shared. Here are my concerns. How much instructional time will these students lose as they ride a bus from Wayne to Glenn or vice versa, five days a week? How does this plan save money or resources? We cannot maintain our regular bus routes on a daily basis. What will happen if there is no bus or driver available? In the event that students in one building attend the AP or elective in the other building virtually, which has been proposed as an alternative, how will they participate fully in that class? Who will monitor them in their own buildings since students can't be by themselves in a classroom? How does this plan honor students' choices to take AP classes, allowing them to strengthen their transcripts and college admission chances? Why is the focus on elimination and not on recruitment for AP classes to ensure greater numbers? As an AP teacher for 23 years, I have learned that sometimes all it takes is an encouraging word for a student to have the confidence to try. This plan alienates our best and brightest students and will be the demise of our AP program. It tells students that they are not worth a class, that they are not worth a teacher. Finally, this plan violates the College Board's policy on accessibility and equity. Quoted here, "The College Board and the Advanced Placement Program encourage teachers, AP coordinators, and school administrators to make equitable access a guiding principle for their AP programs. The College Board is committed to the principle that all students deserve an opportunity to participate in rigorous and academically challenging courses and programs. All students who are willing to accept the challenge of a rigorous academic curriculum should be considered for admission to AP courses. The Board encourages the elimination of barriers that restrict access to AP courses for students from ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic groups that have been traditionally underrepresented in the AP program. Schools should make every effort to ensure that their AP classes reflect the diversity of their student population. I urge you to put a stop to this plan that does not, sorry, that does a grave disservice to your students. Sincerely, Sarah Parminter Boyce."
Thank you, Mr. Henze. All right, Tonda Karpinski.
I just wanted to provide some contractual language in regards to what Nicole shared and what Eric just read on behalf of Sarah. In addition, not only does this language apply to the logistics and the proposed changes where it appears the district has once again made some unilateral decisions without the input of the stakeholders involved, the logistics haven't been worked out, so once again, we are facing the cart being put before the horse. We also are dealing with negotiations and have a negotiation session tomorrow for the W W E A, and so I wanted to refer the Board and the administration to Article 2.10 of the Wayne Westland Contract. This article is not being followed. Within a reasonable time prior to Board consideration and adoption and/or general publication of major new or modified fiscal budgetary or tax programs, construction programs, or major revisions of educational policy, the Board shall inform the association in writing of such proposals and solicit the association's opinion. Administration shall forward a copy of the association's opinion to the Board prior to the meeting on the matter. When Board, sorry, when Board established committees, task force, and other groups formed to study such major changes or to include teacher members, such members will be appointed by the W W E A. Tonight, you've just heard another example of the opinion of the stakeholders and the teachers and the impact it has on students. Not being asked, and the program itself has not been transparent, these changes are put into Board packets, just as budget items are placed in Board packets without the ability to review or provide an opinion many times until after the fact, and then we are stuck trying to pick up the pieces. Not only how it's going to impact the Transportation Department, the costs of running those buses, the logistics around the students, and as you've heard, what happens because if they're missing 20 minutes because they're being bused, then what does that do to their schedule and what class are they missing 20 minutes out of by choosing to attend an AP class? The other part of it is if you look at the course guides for the two high schools, students aren't even allowed the equal opportunity to select some of the courses because it will say, for instance, next to the course, J G only, John Glenn only. So if a Wayne Memorial student sees that, why would they think they have an opportunity to select that class as an option? So I am hopeful that the Board will look at 2.10 and that this can start being followed instead of ignored and dismissed in the contract before any future decisions are made. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Henze. All right, the next item on the agenda is 298.24, which is, no, 299.24, which is Superintendent's Report and Comments. Dr. Dignan?
Yeah, thank you, President Gray. First off, I want to thank Tapt and Graham for being here this evening, doing the pledge. I have some Board accolades. I want to congratulate Ms. May and Dr. Weaver for their accomplishments with M A S B. They're both going to be honored April 25th at a special dinner at Harper Woods, so congratulations. Congratulations to PJ Norton from our Transportation Department. He was nominated by his peers to receive the 2024 Wayne County Excellence in Transportation Award for our district. This award is presented to individuals who exemplify excellence in providing or supporting the safe transportation of students, so congratulations to PJ. Also, I want to give a shout out to our Early Middle College Team who presented at the MEMCA on Thursday. They received an email from the Executive Director of the Michigan Early Middle College Association, letting us know that the presentation was fabulous and the team kind of blew everyone away, so they were granted a technical certificate by the organization, so congrats to them. During the June 17th Board Meeting, Ms. Campbell will present the year-end budget, will encompass all district funds. Our audits are typically completed by October, so once completed, the auditors will present at the October Board Meeting as years pass, so I just want to remind everybody of that. April 25th, we have the Wayne Westland Culture and Diversity Festival. It'll be at 5:00 PM at the William D. Ford. Everyone's invited to it. The RFP for the forensic audit has been completed and posted. We will update the Board and community once the bids have been opened and reviewed. They close this Friday, so we should have more information then. The Corrective Action Plan that was requested by the Department of Treasury and was submitted on March 15th, 2024 regarding the district finances, once the Treasury completes a review of our plan, we will post the plan on our district website and provide updates during the monthly Board meetings as appropriate. We will be providing Treasury with our budget amendment once it's approved, and was approved this evening, so we'll make sure we send that tomorrow. The Wayne Westland Story and Stripes Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament will be a fundraiser for elementary activities. It will be on Saturday, May 11th, at John Glenn High School. Our Continuous Improvement Summit will be, again, May 14th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Career Tech Center. Again, that's open. We want to thank all the building, school improvement teams that have had a huge hand in kind of carrying out a lot of our goals this year. Art students from John Glenn, Wayne Memorial, and Career Tech will showcase their unique designs at the Detroit Institute of Arts during the Wayne County High School Art Exhibit, which starts June 21st through July 21st. We hope everybody has the opportunity to visit and see these extraordinary pieces. Please remember, as we are coming into the final months of the school year, to watch the school calendars, there are amazing events coming up to highlight both our amazing students and staff, so I'll end on that note.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Next item is 300.24, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. Mr. Neal?
No comments.
Mr. Cox?
No comments.
Ms. Abby Mitchell?
Good evening. I'd just like to say to the stockholders and the students and everyone, never stop sharing your comments. Never stop fighting for yourself and what you believe in, and I believe you do it with dignity and respect, and happy Earth Day to everybody. And because it is April and it's poetry month, I would like to share a poem with you guys. The name of the poem is "Springtime." Springtime makes me smile. Time to refresh, renew, connect, and celebrate. Springtime makes me smile. As the tulips bloom, the grass turns green. The birds wake me up early in the morning. Springtime makes me smile. As I ride past the neighborhood elementary schools and see the kiddos out playing on the playground, springtime makes me smile. As our students, parents, teachers prepare for the Michigan state, wait a minute, for the Michigan standardized testing and for the SAT and other tests, springtime makes me smile. As our, as the staff begins to count down the days to the end of the school year, springtime makes me smile. As the students get excited about leveling up to the next grade, or the next chapter of their life, springtime makes me smile. As the seniors and family prepare for prime graduation, springtime makes me smile. As I reflect on the dedication of all of our staff, teachers, our students, our parents, our community, our superintendent, our Board of Education, springtime makes me smile. Oh, y'all supposed to do wait, man, we, y'all teachers, y'all, come on now.
All right, Ms. May?
I don't have a poem.
We had poetry night at my house last night, I'm sorry.
No, that's great. No poems?
No poems. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, so, yes.
You can talk without a poem.
Look, I was so thrown off, no. I'm really, really brief, just wanted to thank the students this evening for leading us in the poem, I mean, not the, see, she got me so thrown off. It's the pledge, not in the poem, and again, just wishing everyone a great week and enjoying the sunshine. I hope it continues to stay out, so thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming here today, and you know, we are going through difficult times, you know, I see a lot of sad faces, and you know, I am excited, we're going to pull together, we are the Wayne Westland family, we will get through this, you know, like she said, I'm excited, we have prime coming up, we have graduation, again, you guys will have the summer off to be able to enjoy your families, so you know, I definitely want to put all the positive juju out there, I love you all as a family, because I know it's very difficult, we're going, because a lot of times, even in marriage, if you're having financial troubles, it causes some strife, but we're going to get through this, we're going to work together, and I really, I love Wayne West, and like I said, I was, you know, alumni from Wayne Memorial, so we're going to pull together, we're going to do this, we're going to make it through, I believe in Wayne West, and we will get through this, we will overcome, we just have to be a little strategic and like think outside of the box when it comes to certain strategies, even like I was kind of thinking outside of the box when you guys were talking about the AP, and with us having the technology, maybe we can have some classrooms at Glenn and Wayne and maybe do some virtual half-and-half like we did during COVID, so just, you know, thinking outside of the box, maybe figuring some ways out, in that way it's not too much a distraction, not costing us too much in the busing, but just like other ways, like our Innovative Academy, so just some different things, and then I'm excited about the career fair that they're having with the Wayne Westland School, so that's exciting, I try to promote different things on my Facebook as much as I can. I sit on the Wayne County Women's Commission, and we have a free event that's to the public, so it's going to be the Women's Resource Fair, it's going to be Wednesday, April 24th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Wayne County Community College, and it's going to be the one on Auto Drive at 8200 West Auto Drive Road, and we have like over 90 companies going to be there, so it's going to be employers, skilled trades, health resources, housing, for instance, there's the organization called the National Faith Home Buy Association, they give you $13,000 down payment assistance for a house you have to pay back, and then at the bank, sometimes they have money, too, so just different resources, veteran resources, so it's free to the community, and that's the thing, I just want to really hope that we get this, whatever you guys need for that bond, like with that money, for that 18 million, definitely will help out, you know, even if we get teams together to get it out to the neighborhoods and really promote that, because we do need those additional funds, and just before I go, I'd like to say, gray skies are going to clear up, put on a happy face.
Oh, that's poetry.
Yes.
It's real, real, real.
And thank you, I dropped the mic.
All right, Dr. Weaver, do you have any poetry for us tonight?
I have no poetry for you. I just want to stress the importance of this operating village. To everyone who lives in our district, if you could please be a committee of one to instruct our community as to, as to how these funds are gathered, it would be a great help to our district moving forward, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And I don't have a lot, but I just wanted to thank the students that came and said the pledge. I think, is that our record? Have we had more than five before? They did a great job, though, and I wanted to thank everybody for being here so late and being so patient with us while we were in closed session. I know in the past I've come back and seen pizza, nobody seems to have ordered any this time, but yeah, and I want to thank our staff for all showing up here and, you know, the members of staff for coming and showing their opinions, you know, we value you, we value your opinions, and keep showing up and keep talking. And with that, I think the last item on our agenda is 301.24, Adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have support? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So. All right. So.